Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City of Lowell, Zoning Board of Appeals. A public meeting for November 14th. The meeting is held also in person, but also virtually through phone, computer tablet, or you can call them as well. Just a reminder to folks, if you have any electronic devices, cell phones, if you can shut them off or put them on silent, that'd be great to not disrupt the meeting. And if you have any conversations, please take them out to the hallway. We'll go into continued business as none. We'll go into new business. We have ZBA-2022-53 of variance. The applicant is Louis Gagnon, property located at 776 Lakeview Ave. Louis Gagnon has applied to Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals seeking a variance approval to convert the first floor of an existing building into three residential units and two commercial units. The subject property is located in the neighborhood business NB Zoning District. The applicant previously received Planning Board and Zoning Board Appeal approval to convert the second and third floor into 10 residential units. The project requires variance to exceed the maximum floor area ratio and any other relief on the Lowell zoning ordinance. There's an applicant here. Good evening, Mr. Marlowe.
Good evening. Peter Marlowe, 258 West Manchester Street, Lowell, Mass. Representing Mr. Gagnon. He is here tonight, Louis Gagnon. And we, I'll just go through the narrative here. Always got to find those glasses. In June of 2020, both the Zoning Board of Appeals and the Planning Board approved plans submitted to add 10 one-bedroom units to the second and third floors of the AG Hardware building. Construction has progressed and the second and third floors have been gutted with demo permits in hand and a visit from the Building Commissioner, David Fuller, along with Peter Holland. Since the approvals, the owner have made the decision to modify his plan for the building. While the upper floors will remain exactly as approved, the petitioner has had to make a painful decision to retire from operating the hardware store. He has reached retirement age, but still anticipated that the long-term operation of the family business, which was uninterrupted since 1954, AG Hardware was huge servicer of the landlords in the Lowell and Drakken area. Legislation adopted in the pandemic allowed tenants to stop paying rent and result was that landlords had to tighten their belts and reduce their expenditures at places like AG Hardware. Additionally, landlords frequently couldn't enter the buildings to do the work during the pandemic. Resulted in serious drop in revenue and the hardware store was pushed the owner to retirement, meaning terminating operating the store. The change that the owner had made for the front-facing of the building on the first floor will divide it into two storefronts. It'll become a mixed-use building. Those will be rented out to some form of retail service, such as a T-Mobile store, tax preparation franchise, something in that line, which will support the neighborhood with the character of the neighborhood. The remainder of the first floor will be three handicap-accessible residential units. We know that these units are in great demand in the city of Lowell. This is an ideal use for the space and helps fulfill the need for affordable housing in Lowell. Louis has retained myself from model building and design to help navigate him through this permit process and oversee the development of the project. Louis and Mary's commitment to the area over the years has had a very positive impact on the entire neighborhood. In fact, the Lowell City Council just gave him an award for the family's years of service not too recently. So he's been a good neighbor to the neighborhood and he's from Pawtucketville. Here's what really happened, and we can, we can't say Gagnon's business was in the toilet or that he had to close down. He tells everyone he wanted to retire and we have to, you know, go on with that. So one, Louis got approval of the project from the city of Lowell, number one. He did get the approval. He applied for financing and it was a long process due to the pandemic. Bank personnel were getting accustomed to working remotely. He got a commitment letter, but the terms involved things that made no sense for the bank. They made sense for the bank, but not for him. His family of the business, he had to back away from the deal and start over. I hooked him up with Jim Heller, a Lowell financial manager. Okay? He's here tonight with Louis and Jim Heller, and he was able to work some numbers. But during that time, the cost increased to levels that were unimaginable. An example, a square foot of three-quarter inch OSB went from $0.34 to $1.48. 250 feet of Romex went from $36 to $118. Eight-foot two-by-fours, $319 to $1065. Everything had to be reworked. Mr. Gagnon had to do his analysis about whether it was time to retire, what the pandemic meant in the hardware business in light of the increased cost and lower margins. We then had to redesign the building and rework the numbers on the first floor. Then he had to get financing, which was approved quickly. We had to get demo permits. We had to walk through with Fuller and Holland. But we couldn't start because now we had to liquidate the hardware store. And that was a three-month project. So liquidation, get everything out of there, have a sale, shut down with everybody who was involved. Tearing down a building is easy. Rehabbing makes it look like a picnic. There were countless other obstacles to overcome, and this was all done during the pandemic. There were many, many other obstacles in the project, but now we can understand the shortage of affordable housing in the city of Lowell. Again, I mentioned he did get a recent citation. And the engineer on the job is Robert Retugu. Jim Heller is the financial man behind it. And Anthony Naganga from Studio 26 is the architect. I like dealing with Anthony. We can work together and I like a lot of the design part of it myself. Recently, there was a question on the Planning Board last week that they want, they were insisting on 5% foliage or landscaping, 5% of the total, and we only reached to four. So I got a letter from Pat Flaherty, the engineer, and he decided that we could get it along the 72-foot stretch of Lakeview Avenue, maybe two triangle corners on each corner on that plan, and that would help. So that's basically where we are. So what we're asking you is, we'd like to redesign the first floor now, basically as a second phase. And I'm open to questions.
Thank you, Mr. Marlowe, for your narrative. If you have no other comments, we'll open up the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition, in favor, in favor, in favor, seeing that portion of the hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition, in opposition, in opposition, in opposition, seeing that portion of the hearing is closed. One more question, comments to the board. The chair recognizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I would say, Mr. Gagnon, congratulations on your citation and congratulations on your retirement. We all aspire to be there one day. Just my opinion, I know you, this is the land, I'm looking for a landscaping plan. I know that you submitted this.
That's what I did was I created a template for a landscape plan. I didn't do the whole landscape plan because it sounds like they want some trees to totally block from the park.
Correct.
To the parking lot.
Yeah.
So that would be frages, blue spruce, things like that, that are going to be, have, you know, needles on it all year long. The other trees will be dogwoods, flowering dogwoods, something that gives an attractive look, along with hostas, maybe some hollies and things like that. But that's where I think I should sit down with the department and ask them, you know, which ones do you prefer? And then I can draw them all for them. So I'm willing to do that. I'm willing to work with them.
Okay. So you would accept that as a condition as to one of the conditions?
Yep.
Okay, perfect.
I can draw each one of those and put in the plants that they'd like. I used to have a girl that would sit down with me and she'd say, this is the trees we'd like to use. And I said, those aren't available, can I use these? And it worked out well.
Yeah.
We've built a lot over in Centerville, you know?
Well, yeah. I'm a fan of your work.
Yep.
I hope that doesn't appear to be biased, but you do good work, so it's appreciated. So on the first floor, there's a comment from the transportation engineer about parking, handicap parking spaces, right? So how many units you doing on the?
On the first floor, we're putting in three and two small storefronts.
Okay, so three, so is it one handicap parking space?
Three handicap.
For each?
Yeah, the whole floor is dead level from rolling, you know, from the way it was built. So we're going to put three handicap units on the first floor, all one-bedroom, and we're going to put two storefronts.
Okay. And that handicap parking would support the storefronts and the apartments?
Yes, it does, totally. Yep.
Okay.
It calls for, technically, when you go over the whole thing, we're not asking for any relief on parking. It calls for 45 units and we have 45 parking spaces.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, I think your plan is good. It's great. And I know we don't, so you're only here for the first floor because the second floor's started.
The second floor has already started.
So it's already been, okay.
Second and third.
Yeah, I was looking for a plan on the second floor, but realizing that it's, because that's already a done deal. Again, I think it would be great, a great addition to that neighborhood. I mean, obviously, it's, you know, any apartments, any construction would improve that neighborhood. I'm with you 100%. I would like to see the landscaping plan, just for the sake of, you know, adding the beautification in addition to.
My only challenge is, it's the trees. What trees do they want from the park? And I'll put them in. The others, we can maybe put more decorative flowering trees.
Got you, got you. I have no other questions at this time. I leave it to my board, members of the board, to ask additional questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. The chair recognizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Mr. Marlowe.
Good evening.
We'll echo the comments of my colleague, Mr. Proko, that you have certainly earned yourself a valuable reputation. And it's very enjoyable having you before us. You're well-prepared. And just by the number of documents, full color, I might add, they're very easily read. And our Department of Plan Development also says that you're one of the most efficient professional people that they deal with in the city. So with all of that, I love the project. I love it. I'm a product of Lowell, Centerville. So the Gagnon family and AG Hardware came to the rescue of many of us homeowners down there, long before the big box stores, the Home Depots and the Lowes. I know those are bad words to you, but no, Home Depot came to the rescue. And it's unfortunate that you're losing your life's love, the love of the Gagnon family with the business. But any assistance that we can lend you to repurpose this building, count me in. I want to compliment you on the fact that you've decided to construct three handicap-accessible units. I know that you weren't required to do so, and those are very valuable, that's a very valuable type of housing stock that you didn't have to do. And you do so at additional expense. So I thank you. I thank you for that. And those future residents, I'm sure, will feel very same way. Peter, one bit of clarification, the first floor will contain how many retail spaces?
Two.
Two. And then with the three?
Three ADA units, yep.
Okay. I just want to add a couple of comments that all these accolades that I just threw you away are not only mine. The Economic Development Director clearly states in our memorandum that your decision also to retain the commercial component of the building, maintaining the commercial streetscape, which the hope is creates some vibrancy for that business corridor, you know, bringing back a bit of a walking neighborhood and maybe spurning some more investments. So again, my compliments to you for that. And of course, the additional housing stock in itself, so vital, so vital to the economic development of the city. So I'm pleased, I'm pleased to support this petition and assist you in any manner for your future success. Thank you.
And speaking of Centerville, it's nice when Anne Marie Page gives you a thumbs up for a project. She was with us at the Planning Board last week, so.
Well, Anne Marie has raised her fingers at me a couple of times, but it's not always a thumbs up.
Yeah.
But I do love Anne Marie.
Yeah, she's a nice person.
Okay.
And she's my neighbor as well.
Oh, that's right. She mentioned that.
Thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair recognizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a few questions, but I think this is a worthwhile change to the plan, especially with the fact that we're providing three handicap-accessible units and still retaining some retail. The two things I want to speak to, if I could, other than just how wonderful this is that you're doing this and it's going forward, because I wasn't quite sure if we were going to see this happen, and I'm really glad it is.
Yeah, yeah. It was, there was a lot involved.
I'm so glad to hear that it's going forward.
You know, he had franchises with, was it Ace? He had franchises with Ace. We had to bring the Ace people in. There couldn't be an Ace sign left on the building. Then they had to come to approve it. There were so many, I've never dealt with anything with so many obstacles.
Highly worthy project, and I'm glad that everyone's working together on this. The plans submitted that we have in front of us show the first floor divided into three new handicap-accessible units.
Correct.
And two storefronts that face Lakeview Ave.
Correct.
But there's a rear unit that faces the parking lot, I guess, or the back.
That's on the rear of the building?
Yeah.
That's a storage area.
It's listed as retail on the plans.
I don't know if it's going to be retail or storage.
Okay, so just to be clear, could we modify the plans and resubmit them to label that as storage then? Because the other documents are all kind of consistent that it's two retail, but the plans indicate a third retail, so.
All right.
If maybe as a condition.
Oh, he's telling me it's going to be his office back there.
Okay. Well, I'm glad you have an office in the building.
No, I just want to make sure. I guess he's going to maintain an office. He owns all the apartments across the street, too, and that's where the 45 parking spaces come in.
So do we classify that, Peter, as professional services? Or does the plan change? Do we need to worry about that? Right now, it's listed as two retail, and there's a third element that's missing from the documents. So we have three residential, two retail, and one professional services?
Yes. I guess we could label it as professional services.
Maybe, as a guess? I think so.
Yep.
And so we'll resubmit the plans as a condition?
Yep.
With that correct labeling on the plans, okay. So a number of months ago, I think it was in June, the Sustainability Council came before the city council and gave an overview of the heat island effect that we're suffering in the city, neighborhoods such as South Lower Highlands and downtown especially, Centerville also.
Yep.
I'd be interested in seeing trees that help solve that with shade. And so I think the trees that you were submitting tonight had a very more ornamental aesthetic versus a shade aesthetic. And I'd like to see as a condition that you submit landscape plans with a direction toward providing shade trees.
Shade trees.
For the.
I'm open to that. It's just that when I've been in front of other towns now, they're forcing us to use native products. And like, I'll give you an example. I hate arbovites. They just get out of control. I love lilacs, you know? I just think there's always that. I think it attracts kids, things like that. But they want these natives, some of these native trees, and they're not as nice as, like you said, some of the shade trees that are available. Of course, you remember back in the '70s, they were putting in those little trees with the little tiny leaves that would just dissipate. No one had to rake them. But they're not an attractive tree.
Well, I disagree with you.
Yeah.
The parking lot at UMass Lowell North Campus is filled with those, and downtown on Central Street is filled with those. I think that honey locusts have their place, but in any event, I think we should understand how to solve or at least mitigate the amount of pavement that's there and provide some shade.
I'm totally open to that.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I do all my own landscaping, David and I, my partner David. So we do it all ourselves anyway, so I'm not concerned about it.
And you do very good work.
Yeah.
And we're grateful, I'm grateful, that you're here in the city continuing to provide.
You do a good job and attracts good tenants.
It does.
Yeah.
So I think I'd just like to have that condition about providing a landscape plan, provide a landscape plan with a directive to provide shade trees.
Yep.
Where possible.
Okay, that's fine.
So it's just those two conditions to redo, or resubmit the floor plan indicating three handicap-accessible units, two retail, and one professional service unit?
Yep.
Other than that, I'm so glad you're here and you're doing great work.
Thank you.
And I'm glad it's going forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair recognizes Mr. Callahan, the vice chair. Mr. Vice Chair, floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, I want to commend Mr. Gagnon for committing to this and staying in the city. Like, it's just being here so many years for him and his family to just stay committed to the city and that neighborhood is just, is just great. Wish him the best of luck on that. And to you too, Mr. Marlowe, I mean, again, every project you come before us, before the board, everything's all well-laid out. It looks fantastic. It's great. And this one is absolutely no different. It looks like it's going to be a fantastic project. My only concerns were, and Dennis brought it up, was the floor plans with the retail.
Yep.
It was labeled with retail in the back, but now it's even better to hear that Mr. Gagnon is using that.
Is his office.
For his own office and to stay, you know, stay active in the neighborhood and keep his properties well-maintained, which I know he will.
One of the things, one of the things I'd like to point out to you, Mr. Callahan, is you had a concern the first time around about storage space.
Yes.
Since the store is gone, we have an elevator, a freight elevator that goes all the way to the bottom floor.
I noticed that, yes.
And we've cleaned out, you know, when you used to go into AG Hardware, all the lighting and stuff was downstairs?
Yep.
It's been cleaned out totally. The floors have been painted. It was inspected by the engineer, and it's going to be divided up into total storage units.
Oh, good.
For each unit. It's really a nice space.
God, that's great to hear, because actually, when you first mentioned storage, when Dennis mentioned that back unit, that it was going to be storage, like, was that going to be storage for the building?
It's completely.
And now it's good to know that you have additional storage.
Yeah.
For the tenants and for the, probably for the.
And it's completely sprinkled right now, so.
Oh, fantastic.
Works.
That's great. Even better, so. Just keeps getting better and better, so. But yeah, thank you, Mr. Marlowe. I appreciate that. The only one thing I had, though, is so these are going to be dedicated ADA units, and you have the ADA parking specified. So these, are those parked, the ADA parking?
For those three units.
Okay, is there any signage plan, just to make sure that nobody else parks there other than?
Yes.
Your standard handicap?
Oh, yeah.
So there's going to be signage just dedicated?
Yes.
To say to those for those.
They'll be numbered, too, yeah.
Okay.
Because what they did was they slid, they wanted us to slide the opening over a little bit to Island Street, so no one thought that a car could pull in there. So we tightened it up just under four feet.
Okay.
Yep.
Oh, great, as long as that's the case, too. I mean, because obviously, you don't want someone who lives there, ADA, you know, obviously ADA, then have someone else take that spot from them?
No, we'll make sure.
When they need it. So I just want to make sure there's applicable signage.
He's an onsite landlord, so that's pretty easy to maintain.
Yep. Okay. Great. But once again, I commend you both on this. This is going to be a fantastic project, and I wish you the absolute best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The chair recognizes Mr. Hovey. Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. I appreciate your openness to the comments of the board. Just looking at the plans, I really don't have any questions. I'm kind of jumping in, kind of halfway through this, towards the end, so I really don't have anything to add with this. I think it's a great project, much needed in that area. I drive there daily, so I think it will be a benefit to the neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hovey. Mr. Marlowe, again.
I know Zoom hates me and it never hears me, but could I speak or no?
Go ahead, Sandel, let you talk. Go ahead.
I just want to say, I cannot say enough, as president of Centerville Community Coalition, on the family and as a pass inspector, in any units I have inspected, they've always been 100%. So I'm sure this, I'm sure this project is going to be remarkably nice. Thanks for letting me speak.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. McNamara. Mr. Marlowe, again, I agree with my colleagues. You do amazing work. Mr. Gagnon, I'm glad to see, you know, you still kind of thriving and, you know, adjusting and pivoting. This conversion of the first-floor unit totally makes sense to me. You know, I don't want to belabor this. Again, I agree with my colleagues that this is a very well-worthy project that only benefits not just that you, Mr. Gagnon, but the city as a whole. I think housing is always needed, and I think that piece of property is very unique and has like a strong history to Centerville. So I also grew up in Centerville, so I remember the hardware place very vividly, too. So thank you for your continued business and pivoting when you need to. And, Mr. Marlowe, you do amazing work. So you heard the comments of the board, Mr. Marlowe. Are you agreeable to those conditions we talked about, the updated floor plans and the updated landscape plans? If you are, we'll move forward with a vote.
We're agreeable to that.
Okay, perfect, Mr. Marlowe. If there's no further comments from my colleagues, we'll move to a motion.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA-2022-53 for variance at 776 Lakeview Ave with the following two conditions, that the applicant work with DPD to provide a landscape plan to satisfy Planning Board screening requirements, as well as helping to mitigate heat island effect with the addition of shade trees. Second condition, provide updated floor plans indicating three handicap-accessible residential units, two retail units, and one professional services unit.
Second.
Motion, Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Brier. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approved conditions.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approved conditions.
Member McCarthy.
Approved with conditions.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approved with conditions.
Member Hovey.
Approved with conditions.
All right, Mr. Marlowe, you've been approved. We wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gagnon. Thank you, sir. Have a good night. Thank you for coming out this evening. Moving on, under our scheduled business on the new business, we have ZBA-2022-54. The petitioner is a variance. The applicant is Remedy Kim, property located at 171 Uppam Street. Remedy Kim has applied to Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals for variance approval to construct an addition and a new deck at 171 Uppam Street. The property is located in the traditional. The property is located in the traditional single-family zoning district and requires variance under Section 5.1 for the maximum floor area ratio and minimum radar setback and any other relief required in the Lowes ordinance. Good evening. Mr. Kim, you want to just tell us a little bit about your project?
Yeah. I am Raymond Y Kim, live on 171 Upham Street. And I want to have, to add the room on, on my deck that I have right now. The reason is, I have my mother, that she 82 years old, and she had a difficult time to go up to the room on the second floor. And so I want to add additional on my deck that I have right now, so easy for my mother to stay on the first floor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kim.
Also.
Yes.
The deck that I have right now, I'm going to move it to the other side of my, my house.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Kim. If there's nothing else, we'll open to the public. Are you all set right now?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. We're going to open up the hearing to the public. Anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? In favor, in favor, in favor, seeing that portion of public hearings closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Opposition, 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 seeing that portion of public hearings closed. We're going to open up comments, questions from the board. The chair organizes Mr. Brier. Mr. Brier, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I believe the requested relief is very minimal, and I wholeheartedly support your petition. Anything for mom. You're doing the right thing. You're a good son.
Thank you very much.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Brier. The chair organizes Mr. McCarthy. Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just have a couple of questions, but the first one is, are you familiar with the comments that were provided by the Planning and Development Department? Namely, the one that states that you actually meet your FAR requirements. You're actually below the threshold that would require a variance. Is that correct, Peter?
That's correct. I did realize this afternoon, I forgot to send the comment memo to the applicant.
Okay, so, so what you're here in front of us for is relief only on the rear yard setback. The FAR, or Florida area ratio, is satisfied. You don't need a relief on that. So the variance that would be issuing if we do so tonight would be strictly for the rear yard setback being, I think it's 3.8 feet of relief being sought. Does that make sense? I'm asking the applicant. Mr. Kim, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. I think the property is incredibly well-maintained, and any, any son that's doing this for their mother deserves some relief.
And also, I do have like, I have only three rooms, and I have two daughters that they share the room. Right now, they need, they need their own room, too. So it's good for me to add the other room for her.
I agree. I think you're right. And your relief being sought is minimal, in my opinion, with the rear yard setback. And so I'm in favor of this petition, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. The chair organizes Mr. Callahan, the vice chair. The floor is yours, sir.
Thank you for your time, Mr. Chairman. Yes, this makes sense. I believe the relief you're asking for is minimal. It's only for the rear yard setback. Peter, do we have to have the submit updated site plan just to fix the table on it? Or is that something we, we have to, I mean, or is that something we can just waive?
Yeah, we can, we can condition that if we want. It wouldn't matter legally if you're asking that.
Just for your, just for your records, for your, for your.
Okay.
Keep in mind, I mean, does, does DPD want that, or do we, should we, could we just waive that, just?
No, I'd move ahead without it. I, I find personally that most contractors don't actually know how to calculate the FAR, so it's wrong sometimes.
Okay. No, I just wanted to make sure if we would have to condition it because of, just for your, just for the record-keeping purposes, to have updated, have the updated site plan with the correct table of the relief that was being sought, which we now know is only for the rear yard setback, so. But I don't have any, I don't have any concerns with this. I believe you meet all the criteria for a variance, and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Callahan. The chair organizes Mr. Hovey. Mr. Hovey, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you. Very familiar with the neighborhood. I don't think this is out of character. 3.8 feet for, to give your daughter an extra room and your mother. I don't see any problems with this. This is, it's a good project.
Thank you, Mr. Hovey. The chair organizes Mr. Proko. Mr. Proko, the floor is yours, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do echo the sentiments of my fellow board members. I, I think the house is, the home is very meticulous and, and very well-kept. I don't think any, I don't think there is any issue with your request here. I mean, it, it meets all the standards. It's, it's just good to see that you are building out. So it looks like you're going to live here. Your mom, your kid's going to be here. The kids with the one room, been there, done that. My daughter's was the same, so I fully understand and support that.
Thank you.
But I can just say good luck with your venture, because this is going to look stupendous. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Proko. Sir, I agree with my colleagues. I think the relief you're seeking is very minimal. I, I have no issues or concerns. I actually think this addition in the deck will actually not just be a benefit to you, but to the neighborhood. I'm sure it's only going to enhance that, that neighborhood overall. And there's no in opposition, which is always a good thing, so I think it's going to add value to the neighborhood and to the city. So I have no concerns. I wish you the best of luck, sir. If there's no further comments from my colleagues, we'll go to with a motion, with a.
Mr. Chairman.
Oh, yes, right there. Yeah, Mr. Proko.
Just for clarification, Mr. Member Callahan's comment, is the site plan part of a condition?
Mr. Callahan.
No, no, I was just asking, Peter, if the, we needed updated site plans, because the, the person who made the site plan made an error on the table of the relief table as far as what relief was being requested, as far as the FAR, when it was determined by DPD that there was, they were incorrect. And I was just asking if DPD required a new site plan, an updated site plan to be corrected, which Peter has said that they don't really need it, so we don't need any condition.
Thank you for the clarification.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Proko. There's no further comments or questions. We'll move to a motion, please.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for ZBA 2022-54 for variance for 171 Upham Street for a variance for 3.8 feet of variance for rear yard setback.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Proko. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approved.
Member McCarthy.
Approve.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approve.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
All right, sir. You've been approved. Wish you the best of luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out this evening. Have a good night. Thank you. Moving on, on our next item in the agenda, in other business, I'm going to take this slightly out of order. We have a minor modification at 642 Gorm Street. Stephen Crowley has applied for a minor modification to his approval from September 12th, 2022, for 642 Gorm Street. The, the project was approved for a three-bedroom unit, but the applicant is seeking to create a fourth bedroom.
So, yeah, the, I believe the project's architect is on to like formally withdraw it, but we received a, a new opinion from law, from an attorney that specializes in land use, that we have been using too broad of a definition for minor modifications, that they only apply to clerical errors. And so for something like this, and later you'll see an application for 459 Broadway, both of those aren't minor modifications, so I've just asked those applicants to appear on Zoom to formally withdraw tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Katramas. Mr. Crowley, or anyone from 642 Gorm Street, are you, are you on Zoom right now?
Hi, this is Robert Tullion. I'm here for Stephen Crowley, the architect for the project. And we would like to withdraw our minor modification petition.
Okay, thank, thank you, sir. If there's no questions or comments from the board, we'll, we'll have a motion.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for minor modification at 642 Gorm Street to be withdrawn without prejudice.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Proko. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve withdrawal without prejudice.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve withdrawal of minor modification.
Member McCarthy.
Approve withdrawal.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approve withdrawal of minor modification.
Member Hovey.
Approved.
All right, sir. Your petition has been withdrawn, removed, approved. Going on in the other business, 459 Broadway Street, minor modification requests. For, he has applied for minor modification to a special permit granted to 459 Broadway Street. The original special permit allows four cars to be sold on the lot at any given time. The applicant is seeking to raise this amount. Is Mr. Gahia on Zoom?
It doesn't look like he is. I spoke to him earlier today and asked him to attend tonight. So I'm not sure why he wasn't able to make it. But he's been instructed to file a full special permit application, so I suppose he could just withdraw the minor modification at that point, or. Yeah, that's at the discretion of the board.
Yeah, I defer to my colleagues. I'm fine with the draw, and he already communicated to DPD. Is that okay with, with my colleagues here?
I agree. I think we could go to a vote to withdraw.
Agreed. Yeah, as long as DPD's been in touch, I believe we informed him at the last meeting, there was the possibility that he would, because of the age of the special permit that was granted and due notice issues, due process issues, that he probably should have, he should have been in touch with the anyway, so I agree with it. Probably should withdraw this.
Thank, thank you. No, there's no further comments from my colleagues, but I have a motion.
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for 459 Broadway Street for minor modification to be withdrawn without prejudice.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Vice Chairman Callahan. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve withdrawal without prejudice.
Vice Chair Callahan.
Approve withdrawal of minor modification.
Member McCarthy.
Approve withdrawal.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approve withdrawal of minor modification.
Member Hovey.
Approve.
All right, that's been approved, the withdrawal. Going back into other business, do we have any questions, comments for the 2023 zoning board appeal schedule? Everyone got a copy of that sent out? Any, any, any comments, questions, any, any, anything from anybody?
I have no issues, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Proko. If none of my colleagues have any comments, questions, update provisions to the 2023 zoning board appeal schedule, we'll move forward with, with the proposed schedule. Mr. Katramas, do we need a vote on this?
I'm not sure about that. I don't think you need to. You can if you want.
Okay, I agree. I don't think we need a vote. All right, and then in other business, we have minutes for approval. October 24th, 2022, meeting minutes. Any comments, questions, edits, revisions for my colleagues? Seeing none, can we have a motion for the minutes for approval, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion for, to approve the meeting minutes for October 24th, 2022.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy, second by Mr. Brier. Can we have a roll call, please?
Chairman Peck.
Approve the minutes.
Member Callahan.
Approve the minutes for October 24th, 2022.
Member McCarthy.
Approve the meeting minutes for October 24th, 2022.
Member Brier.
Approval.
Member Proko.
Approve the minutes for October 24th, 2022.
Member Hovey.
Approve the minutes.
All right, all the minutes have been approved. Any, any questions, comments for my colleagues before we adjourn? Mr. McCarthy, the floor is yours, sir.
I'm just so happy that we're doing the City Lights Parade on the 26th, and I really look forward to that celebration here in the city, so thank you, City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. McCarthy. Agreed. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none. Can we have a motion to adjourn, please?
Three, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. McCarthy to adjourn, and second by the vice chair, Mr. Callahan. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, the ayes have it. Thank you, everyone, and have a good evening.